Adrian N. Breitfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for November 18th, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and live stream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first proclamation this evening is the 35th anniversary of the Dubuque Branch of the NAACP.
Okay, and I see R.R. Stewart is here to accept this proclamation, so come on up.
I'm the treasurer for Dubuque NAACP, but I know we have some of our other members watching at home. For those of you who don't know the history, there started to be organization meetings in the fall of 1988 with the branch getting its charter in January of 1989. So all of this year has been the 35th anniversary. And November is when we do our Freedom Fund where we give out the Ruby Sutton Award, and Sunday was actually Ruby's birthday. So that's why we wanted to do the proclamation in November. And then, in the interest of time, while you read the proclamation, I'm just going to give letters to each of you about our Freedom Fund event.
Okay, and actually, you can just hand those right to Cory right there, and she'll make sure we get them all, but thank you very much, R.R. Well, and thank you for being here and for all the work that the NAACP does to be able to make sure that we are celebrating all it is diversity here in Dubuque, but then all, you know, making sure that we do that for 35 years has been fantastic, so thank you very much. City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, was established in the United States in 1909; and whereas the NAACP's early work focused on anti-lynching campaigns and fighting other injustices such as discrimination in employment, voting rights, and segregated public facilities; and whereas the work in pursuit of social justice is ongoing; and whereas a group of Dubuque residents sought to establish a branch of the NAACP in Dubuque in response to events in the late 1980s; and whereas the NAACP Dubuque Branch established in 1989 celebrates the 35th anniversary this year, continuing its commitment to justice in the areas of education, economic stability, voting rights, health, and criminal justice; and whereas this branch remains active in pursuit of such goals. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby recognize the 35th anniversary of the Dubuque Branch of the NAACP in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon the residents of Dubuque to further affirm the ongoing work of this organization. Give her a hand.
Our second proclamation is Small Business Saturday.
Okay, and I believe Justine Paradiso is joining us virtually? Okay, so Justine, we can hear you hopefully.
Justine, we can't hear you. It looks like you're unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything. Yeah, unfortunately, it looks like we might be having some technical difficulties.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Justine, I'm really sorry to hear that. Thank you for being here, first of all, and thank you for representing small businesses in the community. I will say, as, I will go ahead and accept this, as a new small business owner and a new member of the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce, so I do appreciate all the work that Justine and everybody does to make sure that we bring attention to Small Business Saturday and especially focus on small businesses throughout this week and this coming month. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the government of Dubuque, Iowa celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community; and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local economy, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 59% of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small, independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And whereas Dubuque, Iowa supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 30th of November 2024 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year.
And Mr. Mayor, Justine did put some comments in the chat. If it would be all right, I can just read those briefly.
Please, please, absolutely.
So Justine said, "Small businesses are the backbone of our neighborhoods. They create jobs and drive innovation. Every time you choose to shop small, you're investing in the vibrancy of your town and the well-being of the local economy. For every dollar spent at a small business, 68 cents stays in the community. That means when you buy a handmade gift, eat at a family-owned restaurant, or hire a local service, you're helping to fund schools, parks, and the future of our shared spaces. Let Small Business Saturday be a reminder that your choices matter. By shopping small today and every day, you're not just making a purchase, you're making a difference."
Excellent, thank you, Adrian. Very well said, Justine. Thank you very much for being here and being able to provide that for us today.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 6 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here who would like to pull any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here. We have anyone virtually?
Nope, and no input.
All right, thank you. Okay, then back to the table. I do need to pull number 11, please, for separate discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolutions, pardon me, I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 11.
Second by Farber.
Okay, got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much, Ms. Farber. Okay.
We will move on to items set for public hearing. We have seven. First is resolution setting public hearing on a proposed development agreement with Miller Companies LLC for December 2nd, 2024. Second is resolution setting public hearing on a proposed development agreement with Limestone Legacy LLC for December 2nd, 2024. Third is resolution setting public hearing on a proposed development agreement with 1400 Central LLC for December 2nd, 2024. Fourth is resolution setting public hearing on a proposed development agreement with NEA Neighborhoods Opportunity Zone Fund LLC for December 2nd, 2024. Fifth is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement with SJR Properties LLC and Universal Tank and Fabrication Incorporated for December 2nd, 2024. Sixth is setting a public hearing on a proposed second amendment to lease agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and the Dubuque County Historical Society for December 2nd, 2024. And seventh is resolution of necessity for the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the greater downtown urban renewal area, version 2024.3 for December 16th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have application review for the Housing Appeals and Mediation Board, the Housing Commission, and the Resilient Community Advisory Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. For the Housing Appeals and Mediation Board, we have one three-year term open through January 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Cole Hansen. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application this evening? Seeing no one here. I do know we received something, Adrian, from Mr. Hansen.
Correct, he submitted written input that's been included with the agenda item.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on then to the Housing Commission, one three-year term through August 17th, 2027. We have one applicant, Davis Wald. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No input.
All right. And then Resilient Community Advisory Commission, one three-year term through July 1st, 2026, one applicant, David McDermott. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application? Nobody here, virtually?
Mr. McDermott did submit written input.
All right, thank you very much, Adrian. We can move on to public hearings.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is approving a development agreement with Dubuque Racing Association Limited.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have application review for the Housing Appeals and Mediation Board, the Housing Commission, and the Resilient Community Advisory Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. For the Housing Appeals and Mediation Board, we have one three-year term open through January 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Cole Hanson. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application this evening? Seeing no one here. I do know we received something, Adrian, from Mr. Hanson.
Correct, he submitted written input that's been included with the agenda item.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on then to the Housing Commission, one three-year term through August 17th, 2027. We have one applicant, Davis Wald. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No input.
All right. And then Resilient Community Advisory Commission, one three-year term through July 1st, 2026, one applicant, David McDermott. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application? Nobody here, virtually?
Mr. McDermott did submit written input.
All right, thank you very much, Adrian. We can move on to public hearings.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is approving a development agreement with Dubuque Racing Association Limited.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, the Dubuque Racing Association, for the redevelopment of a lease area lying within parts of Lot 1, 2, and 3 of Chaplin Schmid Island in the City of Dubuque, including the development of a pin seekers facility and providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
All right, thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider City Council approve a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and the Dubuque Racing Association, as just described in detail in the memo from the city manager. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Dixon. I humbly serve as the president and CEO at Q Casino and Resort and DRA. It's a pleasure to be with you as always. We thank you for your continued support. I'm also joined by Ryan Renget, and really just want to share our excitement and gratitude for the continued level of support and so much momentum that is happening on Schmid Island. Literally, I was in Des Moines earlier today, meeting at the State House, advocating not only for the City of Dubuque but specifically about Schmid Island to help continue to bring resources, and this is great to be able to see not only public support, but what we're here tonight is really about private support. And so I want to publicly thank Ryan, you, your father, and your team for taking an interest into our community. Our motto is that we deserve nice things, and you're going to deliver. And so tonight, Ryan's just going to run through very quickly a little bit about, not only himself, but about the Pinseekers brand, and show you a little bit of images about what's to come. And so with that, we're about, you know, four minutes max here to be able to run through, so we're appreciative of your time, and I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Thanks, Alex, and good evening to everybody. Like you mentioned, my name's Ryan Renget, PGA golf professional by trade, one of the co-owners of Pinseekers. Really, Pinseekers is a golf entertainment venue with really bringing the community together. What we really strive for is drawing, growing the game of golf in a fun, unique way and really embracing the community around that. So that's what I've really tried to do my whole professional career, working on, you know, teaching aspects, interesting ways to grow the business, and, you know, we came across Pinseekers about 12 or 13 years ago as I was really trying to develop a concept that I thought would, you know, be great in the Midwest as a year-round activity that could be outdoors. So really, with Pinseekers, we're talking about 40 different bays that we would have or 40 different spots where you can hit golf balls. They're outside, it's a year-round activity, so we have heating elements that, you know, keep it nice and warm in the wintertime. 18 holes of indoor synthetic putting course, so another way for activities, you know, throughout the seasons that can really have enjoyment for everybody. Rooftop lounge that was there, a meeting space for gathering for the amphitheater as well as special events within Pinseekers. Nice casual dining area, full food and beverage restaurant. Showing a little bit about my two facilities that I currently have, one in Wisconsin, just outside of Madison, and the other one in Iowa, just outside of Iowa City. So, you know, really interactive technology. What we're trying to do is be state-of-the-art here, bringing high tech into golf, which is obviously, you know, kind of where we're seeing the industry moving towards. So smart tech, smart target technology, really neat technology that allows the golf balls not only to land on that area, but it lights up and interacts so you can physically see where the golf ball's landing, as well virtually within the gaming system. And then, yeah, just a little rendering here of the meeting spaces that we currently have, so you can kind of get a nice visual to put along with that, somewhat of what the indoor golf course or indoor mini golf course will look like. So we always joke, there's no more putting through the clown's mouth or the windmill. We've kind of advanced that technology. Multi-sport golf simulators, rooftop deck area, lots of different activities really to embrace the community. You know, golf will kind of hook you and get you in, but there's a lot of things there that, you know, everybody from all ages can really do. And then lastly is some of the renderings that we've been working on with the growing team. This is our actual rendering of what would be on Schmid Island. As you're walking up here, more from the back parking lot where the new amphitheater will go, this is the main entrance into that with the putting course being up front. Rooftop deck area, nice from viewing from the amphitheater, and like I said, for social gatherings. And then more of an overview here for a rendering that you can really kind of start to paint the picture of how Schmid Island's coming together here with the future hotel that's already being nicely constructed, and then the amphitheater here that will start on shortly. So we're really excited to be a part of this project. Alex and his team have been great and kind of looking forward for the next steps here. So I appreciate everybody's time. Thanks, and have a good evening.
Well, thank you, Ryan and Alex. Go ahead, Alex.
And thank you, Ryan. I do want to make sure we acknowledge the growing team, Emily who's here tonight, and thank you to Tanya as always for helping to work with Krena and the entire team, as well as Jill Connors from Economic Development, but thank you and exciting. Thank you again.
Thank you. Did I catch an address? Do we get the, for comments, for public input?
Address.
Yes. I wasn't sure if I caught that or not, yeah.
2251 Hidden Oaks Court, Dubuque, Iowa 52003.
Thank you, Alex.
Mine's a little different. Ryan Renget, 1105 Parkview Circle, Wanakee, Wisconsin 53597. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Alex, for your comments. Any other public input on this item? Do we have any virtual input?
We do not.
Thank you.
No input received.
Thank you. All right, and back to the table for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Not a golfer, but I'm pretty excited anyway. Some of you heard my golf story before about four holes of golf, and that's enough. But anyhow, thank you for bringing this to Dubuque. I'm excited to support it. I appreciate your coming investment, appreciate your partnership with the DRA and with everything that's happening at Schmid Island, and this is going to be yet another big deal down there that's going to kind of connect with everything else and make it all into a great big deal. So thank you so much. Big stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So I am a golfer, and I'm very excited, especially the putting course, because, you know, that's kind of where everything is when you're playing. That's the most important part of the game, I think, in many respects. So I thank you very much for your energy and enthusiasm. The design is great, and thank you for helping diversify Dubuque and differentiate it as people are coming across that Wisconsin border. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I know not everybody's a golfer. I aspire to be one day, but my skills are a little lacking. But the important thing I think we need to remember is that even if you're not a golfer here in Dubuque, this is part of what people are telling us they want. When we interview young professionals, they want outdoor experiences, they want interactive experiences, and in a way, this is outdoor and interactive in a new way that we have not had in our community. And so thank you for bringing it to our community, and I'm excited for those of us that golf and don't golf, both. I think that there's really exciting pieces of this for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Yeah, Ms. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and, you know, just looking at the design here, you can tell everyone from all around is going to identify this as a fun spot to be, you know, they see that, and I've seen these around the country. And my own opinion is I do golf, and so I enjoy golf, which means I have low expectations. And so if I find my ball, it's a good shot. So I'm looking forward to doing this as well, and again, a good, great calling card for Chaplin Schmid Island, and it's going, it looks like it's going to fit in great with Mr. Dixon's details and plans about how this is going to be a successful place for all the citizens of Dubuque. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I guess we're disclosing. I'm a pretty terrible golfer, I'll just point it out, but I think it kind of goes with the territory here, you know, this is, it's beside the point, really. You know, one of the things that I want to talk about with this, aside from being thankful that this is, this is coming to Dubuque and that this is an opportunity that we have for a development agreement on this tonight, aside from that, I've found it interesting in the last few months that as we've talked more and more about everything going on on Schmid Island, the conversation has sort of turned to, hey, but wait, what's going on on Schmid Island? There's stuff going on on there, we haven't had a chance to really talk about it that much, which I think has been fantastic, actually, and I think that we've responded to it well. I think the DRA has responded to it well. I think that people have really gotten some great opportunity to be able to give some more input and provide some more feedback on what is going on on the island. We have been talking about this for quite a few years. It predates most of our times on the council, minus a couple of us, and, you know, I think that the idea of what was going to happen on Chaplin Schmid Island was always a broader vision that has now been honed in the last couple of years. And as we've made it a priority in the last couple of years, it's developments like this that have really started to take shape and make it a really exciting possibility. We have another item coming up here that I won't talk about yet that's also a part of this discussion, but I think as we have this broader discussion, I encourage more and more feedback from the community about what this really means to them, how we want to proceed with things that are going on on the island. We are going to, you know, see things like this coming up on, you know, we've seen several of them coming up on city council agendas as we've talked about, issues that are going on on the island, and really, I mean, we're really only talking about one half of it really seriously so far. The other half is still coming, but those conversations are beginning, and I think, you know, the more public input, the more feedback we receive, the better that we can make those plans. And so far, you can see the fruits of that labor. There's a lot happening in really good ways, and it's been really exciting. I mean, even this month, we've got some other things happening down the island with things opening up and making this a real destination, and I have to agree with what you said, Ms. Wethel. This is what people have been asking for, from the moment that we ever mentioned the possibility of running for city council. And this is something that people want in the City of Dubuque is more options to have fun like this, more options to gather in this way, more community spaces, something that draws people in, and draws people in from outside our community, too. So it is really exciting to be able to have this in front of us, finally, to be able to vote on, so I'm looking forward to voting for it tonight. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is Iowa Amphitheater on Schmid Island, bid package two, utilities paving and amphitheater stage.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you.
...development, but thank you and exciting. Thank you again.
Thank you. Did I catch an address? Do we get the, for comments, for public input?
Address.
Yes. I wasn't sure if I caught that or not. Yeah.
Two, two, five, one, Hidden Oaks Court, Dubuque, Iowa, five, two, zero, zero, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mine's a little different. Ryan Ringette, one, one, zero, five, Parkview Circle, Wanakee, Wisconsin, five, three, five, nine, seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Alex, for your comments. Any other public input on this item? We have any virtual input?
We do not.
Thank you.
No input received.
Thank you. All right. And back to the table for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Not a golfer, but I'm pretty excited anyway. Some of you heard my golf story before about four holes of golf and that's enough. But anyhow, thank you for bringing this to Dubuque. I'm excited to support it. I appreciate your coming investment. Appreciate your partnership with the DRA and with everything that's happening in Schmidt Island. And this is going to be yet another big deal down there that's going to kind of connect with everything else and make it all into a great big deal. So thank you so much. Big stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Ms. Robert.
So I am a golfer and I'm very excited, especially the putting course, because you know, that's kind of where everything is when you're playing. That's the most important part of the game, I think, in many respects. So I thank you very much for your energy and enthusiasm. The design is great. And thank you for helping diversify Dubuque and differentiate it as people are coming across that Wisconsin border. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I know not everybody's a golfer. I aspire to be one day. But my skills are a little lacking. But the important thing I think we need to remember is that even if you're not a golfer here in Dubuque, this is part of what people are telling us they want. When we interview young professionals, they want outdoor experiences, they want interactive experiences. And in a way, this is outdoor and interactive in a new way that we have not had in our community. And so thank you for bringing it to our community. And I'm excited for those of us that golf and don't golf, both. I think that there's really exciting pieces of this for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Yeah, Ms. Robert.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And, you know, just looking at the design here, you can tell everyone from all around is going to identify this as a fun spot to be. You know, they see that. And I've seen these around the country. And my own opinion is I do golf. And so I enjoy golf, which means I have low expectations. And so if I find my ball, it's a good shot. So I'm looking forward to doing this as well. And again, a good, great calling card for Chaplain Schmidt Island. And it's going, it looks like it's going to fit in great with Mr. Dixon's details and plans about how this is going to be a successful place for all the citizens of Dubuque. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I guess we're disclosing. I'm a pretty terrible golfer. I'll just point it out. But I think it kind of goes with the territory here. You know, this is a, it's beside the point, really. You know, one of the things that I want to talk about with this, aside from being thankful that this is, this is coming to Dubuque, and that this is an opportunity that we have for a development agreement on this tonight, aside from that, I've found it interesting in the last few months that as we've talked more and more about everything going on in Schmidt Island, the conversation has sort of turned to, hey, but wait, what's going on on Schmidt Island? There's, there's stuff going on on there. We haven't had a chance to really talk about it that much, which I think has been fantastic, actually. And I think that we've responded to it well. I think the DRA has responded to it well. I think that people have really gotten some great opportunity to be able to give some more input and provide some more feedback on what is going on on the island. We have been talking about this for quite a few years. It predates most of our times on the council, minus a couple of us. And, you know, I think that the idea of what was going to happen on Chaplain Schmidt Island was always a broader vision that has now been honed in the last couple of years. And as we've made it a priority in the last couple of years, it's developments like this that have really started to take shape and make it a really exciting possibility. We have another item coming up here that I won't talk about yet that's, that's also a part of this discussion. But I think as we have this broader discussion, I encourage more and more feedback from the community about what this really means to them, how we, how we want to proceed with things that are going on in the island. We are going to, you know, see things like this coming up on, you know, we've seen several of them coming up on city council agendas as we've talked about issues that are going on in the island. And really, I mean, we're really only talking about one half of it really seriously so far. The other half is still coming, but those conversations are beginning. And I think, you know, the more public input, the more feedback we receive, the better that we can make those, those plans. And so far, you can see the fruits of that labor. There, there's a lot happening in really good ways. And it's been really exciting. I mean, even this month, we've got some other things happening down the island with things opening up and making this a real destination. And I have to agree with what you said, Ms. Wethel. This is, this is what people are, have been asking for from the moment that we ever mentioned the possibility of running for city council. And this is something that people want in the city of Dubuque is more options to have fun like this, more options to gather in this way, more community spaces, something that draws people in, and draws people in from outside our community, too. So it is really exciting to be able to have this in front of us, finally, to be able to vote on. So I'm looking forward to voting for it tonight. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Public hearing number two is Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island, bid package two, utilities, paving, and amphitheater stage.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager, Mike Van Milligan. City engineer, Gus Ahoyas, is recommending city council approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and construction estimate of $9,702,000 for the Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island project bid package number two. The bid proposal for the bid package number two project includes a list of desired add-on amenities that are not included in the base bid estimate. The add-on amenities would enhance the overall project and may be chosen depending on the actual bid prices received and the available budget. The add-on amenities may also be added to the project during the construction via change order if it is determined that there is sufficient funding available. The list of add-on amenities is as follows: entrance cut walls, additional parking lot improvements, decomposed granite pathways, replaced seating with sod, stage rigging, dog track drum lighting reuse, and retrofit for artistic welcoming entry sign, and pavement steel reinforcement. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider the approval of the planned specification form of contract at construction estimate for the Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island project bid package number two. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
All right. Then back to the table for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Resnick.
Yeah, Mr. Van Milligan. So the add-on amenities, were they originally part of the plan? And then the money seemed to be more than we had expected, and we cut them because some of these things like pavement steel reinforcement, that sounds pretty important to have.
So our, remember that this is funded significantly with a Destination Iowa State grant. And when we applied for that grant, we were not awarded the full amount that we applied for. So we knew that there were elements that we wouldn't be able to put in the original bid packet. But hopefully through competitive bids, we'll be able to add some of them in and/or potentially for receiving additional grants, which we'll continue, continue to pursue.
Well, excellent. And, you know, stage rigging, of course, is super important for this, for this. So I'm hoping, and it sounds like that there are possibilities that we, again, have things working on. And so that's a real possibility. I just don't see going forward without those couple of items. So you say we are continuing to.
To look at them. And, you know, I probably should have written my memo differently and focused more on the what we are doing, because it's going to be a fabulous $18 million facility. Remember, we also did the deconstruction of what's there, had to do the site preparation, had to do design and engineering. This is just the final bid for this component of construction. So it's going to be a fabulous place to go and be. And many of these things can be added later over time. They don't have to be done upfront. So the goal is at some point in time to have it completed. But it's really going to be a fabulous place to, to attend concerts and other activities, even with what we're going to bid tonight. And I don't know if Alex wanted to add anything to any of that.
Yes, again, Alex Dixon, two, five, one, Hidden Oaks Court, Dubuque, Iowa. And again, another amenity, this would go on the island, but to Mike's very point, and definitely want to call out the engineering department, Nate Stefan, who's here, who's, who's really led this. By having this laundry list of ad alternates, we received a competitive grant through this Destination Iowa grant program. I literally was in Des Moines today advocating that if there is other money that's in that bucket that other communities can't deploy, we want to make sure that the city of Dubuque can potentially be a recipient to have shovel-ready alternatives that can go into the ground to enhance an already good project. And so to this end, we hope, because there's seven people bidding on this project today, that we get very competitive bids that, that can develop, let's say, the program, the base program at a cost lower, that then allows us to go and buy rigging. So that if the symphony wants to come and play, we can, you know, they don't have to rent as much, you know, rigging in order to be able to advance. And so those are those some trade-offs, but we've collectively worked together as a group to have a descending order of priorities that if we're able to get extra funds, that we know how we can put a, whether it's a shovel in the ground or cut a purchase order. And so that really represents what, what Mike just said.
Thank you, Mayor. Very useful information, Mr. Van Milligan.
If I could just go back to the things I should have put in the memo, which is what we are going to do. The three main components of the outdoor amphitheater are, are an open-air shelter with stage that will accommodate varied audience sizes, from regional events up to 2,500 people to national acts of 5,000 to 8,000 people, with built-in flexibility that will open up the facility for a variety of events and destination activities, flexible open space to utilize the amphitheater for local events and activities, in addition to a concert series, with the ability to host local food trucks and experiential activities such as regional poetry events, arts and crafts festivals, sidewalk chalk competitions, and so forth, an ADA compliant outdoor amphitheater with ADA compliant connecting spaces leading to the amphitheater from other areas of the island. And then the bid packages includes sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water main utility work and plumbing, electrical controls and lighting, structural foundations, food and beverage facilities, parking and walkway paving, stage and artful canopy, newly located maintenance building, irrigation, final grading, and landscaping.
Great. Thank you very much for that information and the explanation. I just know that down at the Five Flags, you know, we can't hang heavy things from that. And, you know, the rigging is very important for these, these big concerts, as you know. So I'm glad that you've thought this through, you prioritize the, the add-on, and we'll work for the best. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We don't want to rent the rigging either, but we'll have to if we can't afford the capital. So.
Any other, yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I just, when we went through the materials, I forgot how close this is. January of '26. This is really exciting. And so the momentum has built, it is building, and these kind of things make it feel all the more real. So thank you to you and your team, everyone involved at the city staff as well. You've done a great job.
It's really, this is a city project. And so this is a city staff. And so it's been great working with everyone on the team.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Alex, for the extra information. We appreciate that. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
That motion passes seven, zero.
Public hearing number three is Bunker Hill Irrigation Replacement Project, Phase Three Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager, Mike Van Milligan. Leisure services director, Marie Ware, is recommending city council approve the construction plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $360,000 for the Bunker Hill Irrigation Replacement Project, Phase Three. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
All right. Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the construction plans and specification form of contract and estimated cost of Bunker Hill Irrigation Replacement Project, Phase Three. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
All right.
No input.
All right. Thank you both. All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Ms. Russell.
Thank you. Well, as we all mentioned earlier, I am not a golfer, but I have a lot of people in my family that are. And it is wonderful to have an amenity like this that's enjoyed by so many people in our community. And it's also an amenity that actually makes money. And so it can help to pay for some of the costs. So I think it's really important to continue to maintain a really great golf course for our community to enjoy.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Any other discussion? All right. Yeah, I'm happy to see this on here. I'm looking forward to voting for it. I think, you know, continuing to make improvements at Bunker Hill. So it is a really important community amenity. People talk about it pretty frequently with us, and I know they do with me. So I'm looking forward to voting for this. All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Adrian. Do you have any public input this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Felicia Carner, 15, almost forgot my address, sorry. 1591 White Street, Dubuque, Iowa. As a resident of White Street, I wanted to take a moment to share my experience as a stakeholder who participated in the Central Avenue and White Street corridor study. Living on the corridor is quite different from simply, simply passing through it. The stories of wall shaking as traffic flows by, windows staying closed year-round due to noise and dust, and pedestrians and cyclists feeling on edge while crossing the street. These are real experiences. No other neighborhood in Dubuque experiences home quite like the businesses and residents along this corridor. When I first joined this, when, when I first joined the resident focus group, I anticipated taking a strong stance advocating for two-way traffic and alternate routes for semi-trucks. However, as I engaged with the process, my perspective softened. There was a spirit of openness, understanding, and collaboration that inspired a shared vision for safe streets and a restored, vibrant, historic, mixed-use neighborhood. I could envision a corridor that accommodates both a 12-ton truck and a 50-pound child riding their bike to school. In it, the spirit of compromise, I set aside my initial gut reaction and supported the multimodal design option. The option that seeks the balance, sorry, the option that seeks to balance the needs of all stakeholders. Even with this alternative being the community's preferred option, concerns have been raised about the plan's trees interfering with drivers or suggestions to widen traffic lanes by removing plans, the plan's cycle track, or narrowing plans for wider sidewalks. But I ask, without these basic amenities, without these basic quality-of-life amenities like trees, wide sidewalks, and safe biking paths, where would the compromise that supports residents and businesses be? I think this is also an important opportunity to acknowledge, acknowledge the residents and business owners who have already invested in the neighborhood, those who compromised for years to maintain a sense of community along a highway. For those who live here, this corridor is not a pass-through. It's a home, our safe space. If the preferred alternative is approved by council this evening, our community moves forward on a long path of planning with many ifs and winds. On that journey, I hope plans will continue to prioritize equitable amenities and safe streets with narrow lanes and traffic-calming infrastructure. This is our community's chance to design a resilient urban neighborhood that is safe, connected, vibrant, and sustainable. I'm hopeful that we can continue to unite voices and build something remarkable together. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts as a resident. Thank you to our community for sharing all the voices. And thank you to council for prioritizing revitalizing this corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia, for your comments. Other public input this evening? This is the opportunity to talk about anything that is on the action item agenda, just to make sure everybody's aware. Okay. Any virtual input?
There's not.
All right.
No input received.
All right. Last call? All right. We can move on to action items. Adrian?
Action item number one is Central Avenue and White Street Corridor Traffic Study, Preferred Alternative Engagement Results.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file, approve, and hear the presentation.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager, Mike Van Milligan. City engineer, Gus Ahoyas, is recommending city council approval on the preferred alternative for the Central Avenue and White Street Corridor Traffic Study as developed by Bolton &amp; Mink. While it was not unanimous, based on the cumulative citizen and stakeholder feedback, the first alternative, multimodal-focused alternative, is the preferred alternative of each group that was engaged. Bolton &amp; Mink's memorandum outlines the engagement, planning, and considerations that have been completed to summarize the previous plans by the city for Central Avenue and White Street, while also providing the priorities that this alternative meets. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval. And we have both representative from Bolton &amp; Mink and our traffic engineer, Justine Hall, here tonight to present to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jennifer McCoy. I am a senior traffic engineer with Bolton &amp; Mink. It's great to be back talking to you about this again. Tonight, I want to kind of just take everybody a little bit along, kind of the latest summary of the public outreach we've conducted since we last talked to you at the end of September, and then kind of just lead into a vote on that preferred alternative, as Mike referred to. So just want to take a minute to remind everybody that we are talking about Central and White Street between Fourth Street and 22nd Street. It is the existing one-way portions. It's approximately 30, 44 blocks and 36 study intersections there in downtown Dubuque. We are in phase three of a four-phase process. This process kicked off in April of 2024, and we're planning to wrap up in January. In this latest phase, we were evaluating different alternatives, leading into a preferred alternative, talking back with our stakeholder and focus groups, and having our public open house. Over the last month, we have met with kind of all of these components to gather kind of input on the corridor study with the project advisory team, our project management team, our resident focus group, our small business focus group, and our freight focus group. And we also conducted an additional community survey, where we did receive 327 survey responses. What was talked about with these groups, both the general community and also these stakeholder groups, were these four alternatives. We had, I had presented them back in September. And one thing I wanted to just kind of reiterate is that these alternatives, these weren't born from city staff and consultant conversations. These alternatives were born out of public input and conversation we had over the summer, the amenities survey that took place in July, focus group discussions, and also some of kind of the data analytics, right, some of the known issues on the corridor, how we could try and solve them. And so four alternatives were discussed through this latest round of kind of public engagement. The first is the multimodal-focused alternative, which is a one-way alternative, where Central and White remain one-way. But you can see kind of the difference of a wide sidewalk on Central and a cycle track on White. In both this case, in both of these, the, we had to, one lane of parking is removed in order to kind of fit everything in the corridor. As I mentioned last time, we only have so much right-of-way. So if we want to get wider sidewalks, we want to have bike facilities, things like that, there's, there's a trade-off there. Alternative number two is getting to and sticking around, which was the two-way alternative that we looked at. Alternative three was the slow and flow, which was a one-way alternative option that took White and Central down to one lane, one-way, south of Ninth Street. And then alternative four was a combination where the road was two-way north of 13th Street and one-way south of 13th Street. So all of these alternatives were put forth to the focus groups, our stakeholder groups, and then also through public survey. And as I mentioned, that survey had 327 respondents. We did ask people if they were a resident on the corridor, or if they owned a business or were a property owner on the corridor. And so you can see here that we had 66 people say that they lived on the corridor, 19 said that they owned a business or were a property owner. And then those neither or those non-corridor residents, our respondents were approximately 220. So of all those that responded, nearly two-thirds voted for alternative one, the multimodal. So it really did kind of stand out as, as the leader in choice through the public survey. We did ask the question, there's been a lot of talk about a cycle track on White Street. And so we talked about, well, how important is it for a cycle track to be on White Street? Or what if it was on another street? So you can see here from these responses, 60% of the respondents saying a bike facility is important in downtown. However, 39% said it could be on another parallel street, not on White Street. But overall, it is important to have some type of parallel bike facility to start making some connectivity through downtown. Well, and then we asked what their top three priorities were. So those priorities ranged from landscaping and street trees, improving safety for pedestrian crossings, one-way versus two-way streets, safer cycling options, dampening noise, reducing speeds, wider sidewalks, and then maximizing on-street parking. As I mentioned, there's only so much right-of-way, so we can't fit everything. So what are those top priorities? And the highest priorities that rose to the top were adding landscaping and trees, improving pedestrian crossing safety, and maintaining the one-way streets. So I wanted to dig in a little bit to those demographic kind of response ratios. I mentioned how we had heard also from specific groups like the residents or the business owners. And so just wanted to see how maybe some of these responses changed a bit when we look at those different groups. The residents are in orange, business and property owners in that bluish gray, and then that lime green would be our non-corridor respondents. So you can see here, it's quite clear, alternative one was the top choice for all of those three groups. The next was, how, how important is it to have a cycle track on White Street? And again, you can kind of see here that for the residents, they're showing that a large portion of the residents are saying it's important, or it's important, but another downtown street is acceptable. When you look at the property owners, they say it's maybe not as important. But then when you look at even the non-corridor respondents, they too are seeing that it's important. So it's still rising to the top of having that importance. Again, it could be on a parallel street, but in general, there is that importance of having some type of a bike facility in downtown. So then this is that same question, your top three priorities. So you can see, for all three groups, landscaping and street trees, safety for pedestrian crossings, and one-way streets all rank really high. I think the biggest kind of differentiator, differentiator that I see in this compared to kind of the other trends is when you look at the business and property owners, they actually ranked reducing speeds and dampening noise on those streets higher than maximizing on-street parking. That's how important it is to address the noise and the speeding issues that they feel are occurring on the corridor. So I just thought that was kind of, kind of an interesting trend that we saw in this data. So this is the multimodal-focused alternative. I touched on it a little bit earlier. But with this alternative, which is the preferred alternative that's being brought forth tonight for your consideration and vote to move forward as a preferred alternative, Central and White remain one-way with two lanes of traffic. Central and White remain one-way with two lanes of traffic. Parking is removed on one side of Central and one side of White. A wide sidewalk, outdoor dining and landscaping is placed on Central, and a two-way cycle track is placed on White. Now, a two-way cycle track is actually at the sidewalk level. So it is separated from traffic by, you can see here, a buffer of five feet. And so it is a facility that's really meant to kind of help remove those conflicts from vehicles traveling on the street and provide kind of that alternative space for bicyclists. So here's that evaluation matrix I know that you saw when I was here in September. I have added a column showing the preference from the community. Kind of interesting, it ended up one, two, three, and four. But you can see, as I mentioned before, if the box is red, it has a negative effect from what it is today. If it has a neutral effect, it's yellow, and if it has a positive effect, it's green. And those boxes across the top, safety, equity, connectivity, and economic development, those are our guiding principles laid out at the beginning of this study. So when we look at that multimodal focus alternative, not only is it the preference from the community, it checks a lot of the boxes for having a positive effect in those key guiding principles and goals of the corridor. I know parking is something that's come up a lot and definitely something that has been of concern, and rightfully so. I just wanted to touch a little bit on this. So I mentioned that we would come back with kind of some parking numbers. So today, there's five hundred and three on-street spaces on Central and White. The highest parking peak is a weekday evening, which approximately twenty-four percent of the spaces overall. There will be a few blocks that may be higher than that. But overall, as you can see, there's a lot of green on this map. So when the spaces are removed with the multimodal alternative on one side, that utilization will increase to approximately fifty-two percent. So basically, if everybody is on the west side of the street on Central, or sorry, the east side of the street on Central, there's no longer parking there. They move to the west side of the street, we'll be at fifty-two percent. We're still not at that eighty percent standard when on-street parking is considered full. So that's saying that we can absorb this change or this loss of parking and still not be maximizing out our blocks and still be okay. And this is just on-street parking. Remember, we have garages in the area on Central. We have parking lots. There's a lot of places in parking that factors into supplying parking for the demand in the downtown area. So the other thing I wanted to talk about is the White Street cycle track, or really the cycle track on White Street. And I think it's really important, and I think these lines on the map, I know you've seen this map before, but these green lines are either existing facilities, like the B branch, and the, the side path that goes down to the, the port, and then also the on-street bike lanes at Ninth and Tenth. And some are others that have been envisioned in your planning, like the connection along Seventh Street that would connect through the south side of the Millwork District over through Main Street that came out of the Millwork Plan, or the connection on Sixteenth Street through the B branch and beyond that's coming out of that, that RISE grant, or this, the Elm Street Complete Street Plan. And when you look at that blue line, which is White Street, it starts to connect all of these pieces. Right now, they're just kind of pieces and components. This starts to bring that connectivity through. And it starts to provide, by having the bike facility on White Street, you have that connection to the school. You have the connection to, maybe you live north of Fourteenth Street, but you work at the casino down at the port. You now have an alternative way to get to those places. Bikes want to be, this is for a mode of transportation, not recreation. Bikes want to be where the cars want to be. They want to go to the same things. And we're talking about a mode of transportation, not recreation. So I think when we think about where is that facility, this kind of starts to show that connectivity. And we envision that the, the cycle track would connect over at Sixteenth Street to what's planned there through the RISE grant, then also on Nineteenth Street over to Elm Street, and ultimately to the B branch and some of those things. So it really does kind of complete that connection. So I talked about those priorities. So I just wanted to kind of go over that, like how this alternative checks those boxes on those priorities. So those priorities are by order of importance from the survey. So improved safety for pedestrian crossings. Alternative one, the multimodal enhances pedestrian crossings with bump outs. It limits the intersections to only two travel lanes, so it's less complex to cross those intersections. It adds trees and landscaping. It expands opportunities for landscaping and trees on both streets. It retains the one-way street. That was really important. We heard that from EMS, police, transit, the freight community, to have those two lanes to be able to pass if stopped vehicles or being able to maintain that good signal progression. That was really important. So it maintains that. It doesn't maximize the parking. But like I talked about, we are able, with the utilization we're seeing, to not, still not be at that maximum eighty percent. I think another thing is there's not a lot of loading zones on Central or White today. So as you move forward, that you could figure out in design, maybe it makes sense to have a short-term loading zone for that turnover for your, your Uber Eats or your, your lifts or things like that that need a short term at the curb, you know, ways to support those area businesses. Maybe need to drop something off or pick something up. So that could be a way to help on some of the parking needs. It allows for wider sidewalks, and those, and it has narrowed lanes, landscaping, and bump outs to help reduce trees' speeds, which helps to address those resident concerns. And the trees will help to dampen noise along the corridor. If you can imagine more vegetation, it just helps to kind of dampen some of that noise from the vehicles going by. And then it does include safer cycling options as well, meeting the residents' desire for those safer cycling options. Kind of the last point I wanted to make, too, is that, you know, this was brought up earlier in the public comment, is that this is a continuation of all of these planning efforts coming together, right? It's trying to take, as I mentioned in the past, where we didn't start anew with this study, it was really based upon everything that's already been done. And this is just a sampling of them. But the Central Avenue Corridor Plan, the public expressed a desire for pedestrian-friendly streets. The multimodal alternative provides that. The Dubuque Regional Bike Ped Plan says on-road connections were identified through the downtown to connect to existing and planned trails. Imagine Dubuque in the Mobility Section talks about implementing complete streets in Dubuque designed for all modes of travel. This alternative does that. Move Dubuque provides recommendations on reducing laneless, widening sidewalks, adding bike facilities, and improving walkability downtown. And then, of course, there's the Central Avenue Revitalization, which has been a goal of the councils as a high priority. And, you know, it was also important to consider traffic on White Street and that as well, because they really do work hand in hand. And that solution to be kind of cohesive to transform Central Avenue and White Street both. So with that, I'll just touch briefly on the next step. So if the preferred alternative is voted tonight, a preliminary layout will be continued to be refined so we can develop cost estimates and a phasing plan, which ultimately we'll bring back to you in January so you'll be able to see kind of how all the pieces work together, talk about how it fits into your, this capital, the CIP planning and everything you'll be doing. And so that will be in January of 2025. So I can open up to any questions.
Okay. Jennifer, thank you very much for being here again to provide us with a little bit more information. I had one big question, you just answered it. What's the next step?
Okay.
That was my one big thing I wanted to start our conversation with, so we kind of know that. So now we're, we're clear on that fact that we are, what we're, what we're really voting on tonight is whether or not we, as a council, like this alternative.
Yep.
Or whether we would prefer a different one. And then we'd want direction for the city staff on that, on what other alternative we would, we would want. We are not voting on all the bits and pieces and every dollar that's going to be spent on this.
That is correct.
That comes later, at a later date.
Correct.
Okay, absolutely. And Mike, that's your understanding, too? I should probably ask you as a city manager, that basically we're not voting on all the bits and pieces of everything? We are talking about what the preferred alternative is tonight.
Correct. And then, since you've made the Central Avenue Corridor a priority, through the next budget cycle in the spring, we'll be bringing you proposals on what we think we can finance and how.
Okay, all right. So with that context and the stage set for us, I'll open it up for further discussion. Ms. Resnick?
Thank you. I, I really like the, the stakeholder input and all of the different variety of groups that have provided input. And I think Slide nineteen really summarizes the great benefits and priorities of this particular option. I think it, it provides a good summary of, of not only why these topics are good for the option, but in, in priority order of what the stakeholders wanted. So I am in support of this particular choice. And, well, and of course, there were a lot of trees in there. But if you look, if you look at how the trees will address some of the priorities as far as safety, as far as reducing speed, dampening noise, making it, giving the, the corridor an identity, I just think it's going to be a beautiful change for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Resnick?
Thank you, and thank you for all the great work. I mean, so much went into it, and it just seems to make sense. I'm glad that the citizens were able to weigh in on this and the businesses and the, and the neighbors. As far as the bike lane being on White or Jackson, I can't speak for all bicyclists, but safety is, is the most important thing. And I wouldn't mind going down a block and going across Jackson Street, knowing this is my area, that people expect to see me and I don't have to compete, you know? But it's most important to have a protected bike lane. So you mentioned that it, it does, that there is some protection. The difficulty is, of course, crossing the streets is always a little dangerous, right? So priorities and, and sometimes markings or, or lights or some kind of understanding that says this is what's going on here. So is, what you're talking about is a bike lane. Is that, would you consider that to be a protected bike lane?
That is correct. It is protected. So it's completely protected from traffic. So if it provides any type of a buffer, whether a stripe buffer, bollards, or actually a physical curb, so this is actually, goes one step further, it's actually at the sidewalk height, so, as well. So it's target, it's kind of one of the higher-end levels of bike facilities that you can build, so.
So it'd look great. And if it was on Jackson, if it were on Jackson, it wouldn't have those protections.
It would not. The reason that this level of bike facility was, I guess, planned for White was because of the type of traffic that is traveling on White, the mix of, of trucks and freight and transit and just higher amount of volume. So yeah, if you have less volume and less of that mix of vehicles, then you can have a, I guess, a lesser facility, or you wouldn't maybe have to have as much of an elevated, separated facility.
That, that map that you gave us really demonstrated the connectivity that you've planned. There it is, right there in front of us, where a bike, a protected bike lane really is connected with everything then. And you can really see, and you know, whenever you hear about a bicyclist in the, in the, in the paper or the radio, either they were hurt or they were not paying attention and caused an accident of some type. We need to improve our bicyclists as well as our drivers, right? To let them know that things happen and everybody's important. Everybody needs to pay attention to make this a, a great place to bike. And I think this protected bike lane is a good start for us, too. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Robert?
So thank you very much for the presentation again and for the fine tune that you did with the public engagement, which to have three hundred and twenty-seven responses is quite, quite a feat. So thank you for the time and energy behind that. And I was, I'm looking at your focus group and people that actually participated, and especially the manufacturing, the freight, and the truck industries here. Could you just elaborate once again what their feedback was to you this time regarding the two-way traffic or the one-way traffic and how they came to have that conversation with you?
Two-way street versus one-way street? Yeah, so we talked to them about a two-way street versus a one-way street. They were concerned with the two-way because they would only have one lane in each direction. So if a bus were stopped or a car would stop or something, or somebody was parallel parking, they would have to wait and traffic would back up behind. And so they felt that having two lanes in one direction would be the best thing for their operations.
So they were happy with the decision of the selection that you are promoting tonight?
They had some concerns about the lane width. And so we talked to them about the lane width because today they have a fourteen-foot lane on Central and a twelve-to-thirteen-foot lane on White, and we're recommending an eleven-foot lane. However, that eleven-foot lane that does not have parking does have an additional foot and a half to the face of curb for snow storage. And we call it the curb offset. It's just kind of an extra design element. So there will still be a lane, twelve and a half feet in essence, from lane line to curb face. So trying to accommodate, you know, all the things, I think, is what was mentioned earlier. It's like just trying to fit all the pieces together. But, you know, when we had talked to them from the beginning, they talked about how going along the corridor wasn't as much of a concern as the turns at key intersections, like at Ninth and Eleventh and Fourteenth. Fourteenth, not today, but in the future will be a big one. So our design will include not having bump outs at those intersections, pulling back parking as needed. Again, so trading a little bit off for the pedestrian crossings at those locations in order to accommodate the trucks. So it is a trade-off. So, but then we are proposing the narrower lanes, recognizing that's a bit of a trade-off for them, too. So trying, trying to find that, that compromise.
And then as the RISE grant, as we basically get the bridge set up, they are looking hopefully to use that as another means of aggress out of that corridor?
That is correct. I know one other thing we've talked to them about is establishing a truck route in downtown. I know we've talked to you guys about that as well, council, and using the Fourteenth Street overpass as such as a way to get them to be able to get in and out of downtown without, and it'd be a reliable way because there wouldn't have to be waiting for trains and things like that. So we did talk to them about that, and they're open to that idea from what, what they had talked about, so.
Well, thank you, because this is complex, because you not only have residential, but you have truck and freight traffic. So thank you very much for exploring that. And I, I'm sure that the business and the freight groups appreciated the opportunity as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate all their feedback through the process. It helped us get a really good understanding of how everybody uses the corridor.
Thank you.
Ms. Wethel?
I ran for office first, starting in January of 2022, and I had a lot of people say to me, enough studies, let's do this. And at the time, I have to tell you, I was kind of a little skeptical myself. Let's do this. And I represent part of Central and White that I heard from enough people that were passionate about moving into action. This is why we did this. We wanted to collect community feedback. We wanted to ask people who were invested in the corridor what they wanted. I don't know that anybody has everything they wanted, but that's a little bit of the compromise. Now, I asked some questions offline before tonight. And so I wanted, just so that people know that we have inquired as to some of the concerns. And Ms. Hall, I might ask you to come up for part of this, too, if you wouldn't mind. So when we talk about the question of, and Mr. Resnick had mentioned it, the bike lane White versus Jackson, I understand that we did not request within the RFP an examination of Jackson as part of this. And so my question that I had sent forward to staff was, so if such a significant number of people said, well, we want a bike lane, we really just need one, we don't care where it is, I would like to speak to the boundaries of creating that on Jackson versus where we have it visually and positioned within this plan. And I know you had sent some valuable feedback that I would just like to make sure the community hears, Ms. Hall.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I did receive your question on that. And I think Jennifer kind of explained that when Mr. Resnick was asking that as well of, you know, it wasn't, unfortunately, Jackson is not in this conversation, and it is also not in the RISE grant conversation either with the complete streets with Elm and Sixteenth. It's kind of turned into this corridor where it's like, oh, my gosh, we're just going to throw everything on Jackson. But, you know, we do kind of like what this study has done with all the previous studies is, you know, we want that bow on everything so we can get down and do something, so we're not having as many studies. But based on safety, based on the residential areas on Jackson and kind of what that looks like, it does need to be analyzed and it needs to be looked at from a traffic data perspective. But it also needs to be, you know, that engagement with the community. So it, it feels like another small study, but, I mean, based on council input and based on what we can do in-house, and if we want Bolton and Mink to do it, you know, obviously there's inner workings on that whole thing. I, I would say Jackson would need to just be analyzed as a separate entity for, for a bicycle facility based on the protections, again, the volumes and that sort of thing. But I don't think it may need a grandiose study as such as Central and White, just because we are, would specifically look at just a bike facility on Jackson. So I know that was a lot. Does that kind of answer your question, or do you have an?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people who have asked that of me
Yes.
have sufficient information to understand where we are at and why. The other thing I would add to it is
Sure.
a goal and priority for the Council is Central and White.
Yes.
To make sure that people of all different desires of transportation can access that corridor. And so as that is our actual goal and priority
Yes.
we studied that as a goal and priority.
Yes.
So, so yes, the, a couple other things. One is that this traces back to our work session that we had starting at 5:15. So for folks at home that did not tune in, I don't blame you. It's a long night. But we talked about creating, examining census tracts where people have struggles with utilities and creating green space around Central and White would target somewhat part of the census tract we examined. Creating green space to cover and keep homes cool for people that struggle to cool their homes. I mean, we're trying to really incorporate how to look out for our entire community with this, so the green space speaks to me a lot. The other thing that I had sent forward was the question about the 11-foot traveling, and you spoke to it. I just want to thank specifically Mr. Pape from Tucker, who took time to kind of explain that to me at one of the community listening sessions. So I appreciate that we have to live in the now as well as what we desire for the future of Central and White. In the now, we have truck traffic. And so in understanding that, when their trucks are 10 feet, three inches to 10 foot, six inches in width, we're talking about an 11-foot lane, but that is extended, as you said, to 12 and a half feet, and we're going to be mindful of bump outs. I just want to make sure that we continue that path of being mindful of what, what it is now and what we have to accommodate now, not just a pie in the sky of what one day folks want to see into fruition. I appreciate that, too, but we have to be living in reality for our transportation industry, too.
And if I could comment, I mean, I think that kind of goes back into your Jackson bike facility question of, okay, if it does need to be looked at, if it needs to be analyzed a little bit and based off of what Central and White show and that sort of thing, it's, you know, we're kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit more, too, of, okay, are we actually going to, you know, we have an opportunity here on White Street, but then let's say we do look at Jackson and, you know, it doesn't turn out or whatever, or it's, maybe it's the new, new alternative. There could be multiple things, but what we have from our community survey is that a bike facility is important, and 60%, of people say that, whether it's on White or it's, it's off White. But also the timeline, I think, is, is another caveat that we have to kind of anticipate with everything else. You know, we're waiting for the overpass, we're waiting for some connections, and we're kind of building this. So do we, you know, have the opportunity to build it on White Street, or do we need to look elsewhere on parallel streets? And Jackson, I'm just saying, doesn't necessarily need to be Jackson either, so just putting that out there as well.
I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Yeah, to kind of build off of a little, what Katie mentioned was, in 2022, you heard about it, I ran on this in 2019. I sat in the 2016 sessions about planning for this, so this has been a long time coming. So this has been an issue that has been near and dear to my hearts and to my neighbors because we just, we want this to happen. We need this revitalization of our neighborhood. I've had many neighbors reach out to me about lamenting of losing a heartache drug, and I'm not going to go on that topic, but that is an example of why we need to be doing this project. If we don't, we are wasting our time here tonight and everyone's time that we wasted for years on this, because this is, we need to revitalize this entire corridor, this entire neighborhood. And my focus has always been on the folks living there. Jennifer, can you remind me, one time we, you, about three months ago, when you talked about the number of people, pedestrians, how many was that again, versus the number of vehicles? Was it nine to, nine, 9,000, I think it was?
So the number of pedestrians was equally as high to the number of vehicles, especially in the area of like 16th Street to the north, on the north end of the corridor, so.
So, so we have all these people walking, and so my main concern is always going to be the safety of the people living in the neighborhood and walking through the neighborhood, particularly what Ms. Carter mentioned about a 50-pound child. So that's going to be my focus, so I'm all for this moving forward. I know it's going to cost something. I don't know how we're going to pay for it, but we're going to figure all that out. But we have to basically move forward on this, otherwise, what are we doing here tonight, folks? So that's all I got. Thanks.
Mr. Sprank?
Yeah, Mr. Jones? Yeah, for me, this has been a, a lot of reality orientation, because when I entered this conversation, boy, we got to make them into two-way streets, it helps commerce, it helps everything. Well, that doesn't quite work. And the biggest reality that I've come to, to understand is that for many addresses on Central Avenue, there's just not very many feet between my front porch and the guy across the street's front porch. And we're trying to put two lanes of traffic and two lanes of parking and sidewalks and green space in there, and there just isn't enough room for all of that. So that's, that's a reality. It's one that we can't fix unless, unless you want to tear down all the houses on one side of Central and White, which nobody wants to do. It's just not feasible, it's not a, not a good answer. And when you've got a 200-year-old city, it comes with problems like that. People ask me all the time, who the heck designed this when they're looking at JFK, Highway 20, University and Cedar Cross all coming together, that five-point intersection? I don't know, but I bet it was leading pack animals, wherever it was. It was, wasn't an intentional design, it's what we got, because it was what was here when we got it. So we got it, we can't live with that. I liked the, I liked the two-way combination one for a while till I talked to some of my police officer friends and said, you know how many tickets we issue right now for wrong way and a one-way? It's a lot. And go back to my EMS days, if you have a collision, if you had an intersection collision, that can, that can hurt people and hurt them pretty badly. But intersections are there whether it's a two-way street or a one-way street. But in a one-way traffic flow, if they crash into each other, they scuff up the sides of the vehicles and, and the people get out to, to talk to each other and resolve the accident. They don't get beat up and ground up badly. You get a wrong way in a one-way and a head-on collision, you've got a high potential for death, you've got a tremendous potential for life-threatening injury, that's the collision you want to avoid at all costs. So this two-way answer starts to make sense. David sniffed this out in September when we were sitting here. He looked at the chart and he said, you know, the one that has the least negative impact pretty clearly is a multimodal focus. And I went home and looked at it some more and been looking at it today some more and looking at the recommendation, I said, boy, that was, not, not that David's Mr. Obvious, but that night, that night he nailed it on first glance. And now we find that we've got hundreds of people saying this is the way to do it, too. So everybody that's spoken here tonight's been right. We've got it, it's time to do something, it's time to get this moving in a good direction. We've studied, studied, studied it, and I've, I've learned a lot of things along the way that some of my opinions were wrong, and time to look at, at what's right. This alternative is clearly the best one for the people that also accommodates the rest of the realities. I thought we were going to get all the truck traffic off of Central and White when we started this conversation. Well, how do you do that when some of it is based on Central and White? And they're not people that, that you write off, these are substantial employers that bring a lot of people to work, that bring a lot of products to market, that, that the whole pulse of the community relies on to get their work done. So you have to accommodate that. Now, we'll be able to get the through traffic out of there, DOT is helping us with that, with the arterials and everything, and that'll, that'll be a, a big improvement for the neighbors, but not as good as, as we thought we were going to get at the beginning of the conversation. So here's another big reality that hit, hit you in the butt, that we're going to have to figure out a way to accommodate trucks through this corridor safely and efficiently. So I think, given all the geography that we're working with and the realities that have been smacking us in the forehead since we got into the conversation, this is the very best path forward, and I look forward to supporting it.
This is a great conversation. I, I love hearing how everybody's views have changed a little bit over time as we've looked at it more carefully. That's how studies work. I mean, that's basically how science works, right? You look at things more carefully so you can actually understand how they're actually going to work and what's going to, what's going to happen. I don't think I have many questions, so feel free to sit down if you want to, you can. You've been standing there a long time. I, so I'll just, I'll wrap this up in, in case anybody else has some other questions. Otherwise, I mean, we could always bring this back up. But this slide that's up here right now is such a great view. It's, it's a little, and a lot of squiggly lines and stuff, and it doesn't really tell the whole story, but basically if you look at that, you can see what's going to happen in the next five years. In the next five years, things are going to be very different and in a very good way. And the reason is because we've been planning for that for a long time. And not just us who are sitting here, people doing this for a very long time have been making really smart decisions about how all the pieces fit together. So if you think about what you see on the screen right there, you've got Central and White, which we're talking about tonight, and we've recognized for, for a pretty long time that that's a connecting point for a huge chunk of, for really all of our downtown and from the north to the south end of all of Dubuque. And then if you look at that, you see, we already mentioned, the 14th Street overpass. We recognize we have a major issue coming, and we need to be able to move people past the trains that are going to be stopped there. I've already been experiencing this quite a bit more myself lately. And as we do that, we need to be able to get to the places we need to go. And the truck traffic was a major discussion in this, even though we knew that we were going to be rerouting truck traffic in general, but then still having a lot of it that is based right there. You see something else we talked about tonight, Schmidt Island. Chaplain Schmidt Island has been on the list for a long, long time. That's absolutely connected to all of this. Part of the Elm, the, part of the 14th Street overpass is going to be Elm Street and that connected area that's right there, too. And I know we've had some talk about Jackson being kind of in the middle of that, but Jackson really is a part of all of it. We haven't done a study on Jackson Street, but we've recognized that Jackson fits into this entire equation. Going a little bit further down, you see the Millwork District. We're not done there either. We're not done talking about that. We started talking about more green space there, we've talked, started talking about how more commercial aspects can come to there, how we can have more entertainment there. And then just up from that, we talk about the Dubuque Museum of Art, which we've only had some conversations at this table about, but we've talked a lot about Five Flags right across the street there and how all that's going to be fitting together. All of this has the potential of happening in the next five years. It's going to take some time to get the funding to do it all, it's going to take some time to get the people power to do it all, but it's happening. We've decided to do this, and it's, it's like the whole, I love it when a plan comes together, it's all coming together, and, and this is it. And this is the opportunity here. So this process has been absolutely excellent. So Jennifer, thank you to you and your team. Justine, thank you to you and your team and the engineering department and everybody. The process has been excellent. And, and I should say the biggest thank you to people like Felicia, thank you for being here tonight, Felicia, to say what you think as a person who, who lives there, this is your life right there on White Street, and that means a lot. And, and, and folks like, like the trucking companies that have come and talked to us and everybody else who's been here to be able to say, these are, this is our livelihood, this is what we want Dubuque to be, and it all means so much in this. And the process has included every single one of those voices at multiple places along the line. I mean, I just can't think of a better process than this. And the bottom line is, we, we are totally going to figure out some of these details. I have full confidence in us, based on the evidence of what we've done up to this point. Plus, other cities have figured it out. Go anywhere else in Iowa right now that's a city near our size, and what you're going to see is protected bike lanes, you're going to see places where pedestrians can cross the street, you're going to see places where truck traffic and car traffic and homes and businesses exist in harmony. And in some ways, we're catching up to that when we talk about Central and White, but in other ways, we're just doing exactly what everybody else is doing in a way that's going to totally work for us. I'm, I, I love this process, I love this alternative. I didn't love this alternative when I first saw it. I just didn't, but I love it now. I was fully convinced for years that we needed to change this to two-way traffic on Central and White. I am no longer convinced of that, and I think it's based on the fact that I listened to people. We all did. We got a chance to listen to what people really wanted. So I'm feeling really good about where we are. I, I think, I think that this is exactly where we need to go. What I would caution us against is hemming and hawing too much longer on some of these decisions. If a bike lane works on White, let's just do it. I really think that we should just go for it and, and make it happen. And as long as we don't see any other issues that come up that say like, hey, this is, this is a bad idea all of a sudden, if we think it's going to work and we do that based on what we're doing, I hope we can start planning for it. I know that, you know, we, we had long discussions about bike trails and things like that, and it didn't quite make it high on the priority list, but Central and White sure did, and it has for a long time. So if we're going to do this, I hope we just go for it, and I hope that we continue to do it while talking to everyone and planning for how we're going to move truck traffic through here, how we're going to move people, how residents are going to enjoy this space more, and how we're going to draw more businesses and people to it. And I'm, I'm fully confident that we're going to be able to get that done. So I, I support this alternative, I support the process that we've had, I'm really excited about this fun-looking picture up here and all the things that it means for the next few years. All right, motion on the table is to receive and file and approve this alternative. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is submission of EPA grant application for the Dubuque Community Resilience Hub project.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sprank?
I motion that receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
First by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Technical Grant Analyst Assistant Justin Tilgen is recommending approval of a grant application to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Community Change Grant Program. This grant presents an opportunity to fund and expand Dubuque's climate resilience and economic prosperity initiatives targeting neighborhoods most affected by environmental challenges. The city's application leverages over a decade of experience in community development projects, notably those addressing climate resilience and equity in low and moderate income neighborhoods. This wealth of experience and expertise ensures the success of the proposed Dubuque Community Resilience Hub project, designed to advance Dubuque's community resilience, environmental sustainability, and economic opportunity. This effort was developed by a team of city leaders and staff across departments, including the Office of Sustainability, Department of Public Health, Economic Development Department, Public Information Office, the Office of Shared Prosperity and Neighborhood Support, and the Office of Grants and Strategic Partnerships, and the Dream Center and their team, including Grown and Properties. The city's partnership with the Dubuque Dream Center remains central to this work. The funding requested will provide critical support for the creation of a Dubuque Community Resilience Hub, enhancing the resilience, health, and economic vitality of Dubuque's most vulnerable neighborhoods. The collaborative efforts of the city departments and partnerships with the Dubuque Dream Center will drive long-term improvements for Dubuque's residents and ensure comprehensive support for Dubuque's resilience against climate and environmental challenges. This funding will enable the city and the Dubuque Dream Center to collaboratively address climate resilience, health disparities, and economic opportunity in the most impacted neighborhoods, reaffirming the city of Dubuque's commitment to a more equitable and sustainable future. Central to this effort, the Dubuque Dream Center has consistently played an essential role in supporting low-income and marginalized families within targeted neighborhoods. Their community trust, proven success, and expanding local programming are not just instrumental, but integral to this grant's success. The proposed Dubuque Community Resilience Hub project includes three key components. Number one, the Dubuque Resilience Hub. To be housed at the, housed at the Dubuque Dream Center in the former Fulton School, the Resilience Hub will serve as a central resource for emergency shelter, climate-related disaster preparedness, and community support. Number two, the Dream Center Job Training Program. In collaboration with the Dubuque Dream Center, this program will train area residents, particularly unemployed and underemployed individuals, and high school apprentices in sustainable construction, energy efficiency, energy efficiency, and environmental health skills, positioning them for career opportunities in high-demand sectors. Number three, Green and Healthy Homes Program. This element targets housing retrofits across 75 housing units in the project area to improve energy efficiency, indoor air quality, and overall housing stability. This component will create safer, healthier homes for low-income residents. The proposed partnership and project support mutual goals such as economic development, environmental stewardship, and community enhancement. The project application has requested a grant amount of $19,882,221 allocated across three key project components. First, $717,460 covering necessary staff costs, benefits, travel, office supplies, and testing supplies essential to the program's operation. Second, contractual services amounted $2,589,690, including fees for development coordination, healthy home support, additional contract services, and rate healthy home support, additional contract services, and rate-on testing. Finally, construction and other costs comprise the most significant portion totaling $16,575,071. This includes the construction of a community resiliency hub, including an addition to Fulton School. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval of the U.S. EPA Community Change Grant Application.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sprank.
Just a quick question for the city manager. What would the cost be to the citizens on this? It's a grant, so I'm assuming little to none?
That's correct. So the city of Dubuque is, does not have a contribution to the project itself. It's funded through the EPA grant. There's no match requirement.
Wonderful. And then I guess my comment, I can easily find 75 homes in a four-to-five-block radius of the former Fulton School, now the Dream Center, that could definitely use some improvement. So I am fully in support of this.
Mr. Sprank? Yeah, Ms. Rousell?
Thank you. I think this is a great opportunity to more fully utilize the former Fulton School. I also think it's key, as was said, that the Dream Center is really seen as a trusted partner. But I had a question about, it said the grant includes costs for personnel, and it doesn't really talk about who will actually run this or, like, let's say there was a need for heating, cooling, shelter. Who, who does that? Will we have to hire more people, or would it be our people just moving over there?
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Terry to...
Let me just answer. We also worked with the Department of Emergents, the County Emergency Management Staff, Tom Berger, because in the case of an emergency, this facility that's being built at Fulton School would be taken over, if you will, or managed by the County Emergency Management Staff and city staff. So let's say a derecho hit, tornado, some disaster. This location would give us an opportunity to be nested in these most challenged neighborhoods where a higher percentage of residents live in apartments and don't necessarily have a basement or a safe place to go. So this idea or concept of a resiliency hub, and Corey, correct me, but we had a workshop with national partners in 2017, and this was one of the outcomes of that study in partnership with city staff and other partners across the community, that we really didn't have an overnight emergency center in case of a disaster. So the idea is that then those costs would be most likely absorbed by FEMA long-term because if it was a national or, you know, declared disaster, that would fall under FEMA. But that is the plan. But after it's built, it becomes the Dream Center's facility and obligation to support. So for three years, funding would go in terms of personnel. There would be a trainer hired. Alexis Steger and the Department of Housing and Community Development would manage, co-manage that with Robert Kimball at the Dream Center, hiring a job trainer for three years to train these young people and coordinate their training in the 75 homes. It would also pay for one assistant at the Dream Center for those three years to assist in communication because there's a lot of community engagement required by this grant. And let me just footnote here, a big footnote. This is just approving submission of the grant. It's a highly, highly competitive program, and we also know that Department of EPA, for example, just like Department of Energy, Department of Transportation at the federal level, they have all these sub-offices. This grant comes out of the Office of Environmental Justice, and we know that they're very eager to make these awards in the coming weeks, and they've been oversubscribed. So this is in concept level. It's not an awarded grant. We hope it's awarded.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Jones?
It's a, it's a great proposal. I hope that we get the grant and can do it. Of course, we're going to support applying for it, and in case the, in case the reality hasn't set in everybody, this is on Central Avenue, which is going to be easier to get to here in coming months.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Jones. Yeah, I just want to, I just want to say thank you to the team that put this together, this whole proposal. You know, it seems kind of complicated on its face because it wasn't something we were necessarily talking about, but I'm sure Ms. Farber and I will mention that we just, we were just in Florida this past week for the National League of Cities Conference. It was there, and it was in Tampa, and there were multiple places in Tampa that I saw where I was talking to people that were talking about, this is where FEMA set up when the hurricane hit, and this is where we, you know, ran operations out of and all these different things. And it got me thinking about this as I was reading this on the way home from that trip. I was, I was thinking, wow, that, we don't really have something like that in the way that we would really need it built in this part of the city. We have some opportunities, especially with the new, with the collaboration with the Bright Minds Childcare Center out in the, in the industrial park to be able to have emergency services potentially there. Those things are going to help. We have a good facility already in emergency services. They're on the western end of town, but this, this capability to have centers like this to have more resiliency is really important. And then to mix it in with a continuation of the Green and Healthy Homes program funding is fantastic. I just, I love everything about this. I understand the competitive nature of the grant. I do hope that we can have the opportunity to be able to receive this. Yeah, Terry, go ahead.
Just to let you know that, you know, disaster is always a priority, is what city managers instructed us. Disaster is always a priority of council, and this had specific requirements. The grant, you could pick from four opportunities, and one included resiliency hubs. One was job training for people who were either underemployed or unemployed, and it also included air quality improvements or water quality improvements or brownfields, and we selected the air quality in the homes because that can be part of the job training program. Just so you know that these grants don't come and just say, hey, ask us for $20 million. You know, they have very strict guidelines and specifications, so those were arrived at collectively with our partners at the Dream Center. In addition, we are the required regulatory applicant, but the funds had to flow to a nonprofit that works with people in these justice 40 census tracts. And the census tracts that qualified in Dubuque for this grant were 1, 3, and 5, which is Eagle Point North End and Washington Neighborhood, generally speaking. Just again, grants come with a lot of parameters, so.
And not to belabor this too much, but you just made a point, that disaster is always a priority, resiliency is always a priority. That's why we need our partnerships with our federal government and our state government, and why I do hope that somebody from there is listening to be able to recognize that those partnerships need to continue as we do this because we really do, cities can't do this kind of stuff on their own. As Mr. Sprank pointed out, we can't just come up with this kind of funding to be able to build something like this. We need a partnership to get it done. So I appreciate that that partnership exists today and hope that we can continue to see those partnerships in the future. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and approve the submission of this grant. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file.
Second.
Got to move by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is transmitting the notification of the city of Dubuque receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 19th consecutive year. In addition to receiving the award, the city's budget receives special recognition for strategic goals and strategies. Special recognition is given when all three reviewers give the highest possible score in a particular category. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson, Budget Manager Laura Bendorf, Budget Financial Analyst Joe Link, and Budget Financial Analyst Robin Hosh, and the entire city team. And if you wouldn't mind, I would like to just give you a couple of comments from the actual reviewers. Excuse me as I change documents here. So remember, there were three reviewers, and we received comments like when they were talking about strategic goals and strategies. The document includes excellent organization-wide strategic objectives and strategies. The city of Dubuque presents their mission, vision 2038, focus areas, goals, priorities, and guiding principles. Outstanding. Their strategic plan discussion is detailed and transparent, identifying relevant departments for individual goals. Then when they talk about priorities and issues, the priorities and concerns are detailed in the management letter accompanied by relevant key considerations. Then when they talk about the budget overview, the budget overview is well-written and effectively provides budget issues, changes, and decisions. And when they talk about some of the material that is in the presentation, like photographs and things, says the photographs really add to the effectiveness of these charts. Department Organization charts enhance the overall chart. Then when they get into fund descriptions and fund structure, the document outlines the functional units that comprise the fund structure, including their connection and role in financial resource allocation. Then they go on about fund relationships. The report addressed the correlation between the various departments and their respective funding. Then they talk about financial policy. The city includes good financial policies that will help structure the budget process. Extensive financial policies are presented. And when they talk about the budget process, the budget process is meticulously outlined to guarantee that financial planning and decision-making adhere to the necessary standards. They talked about the consolidated financial statement. The Dubuque include, the document includes an effective budget summary that encompassed significant revenue sources, expenditures, and financial allocation. They talk about the three-year consolidated and fund financial schedules. The document provides a clear overview of the organization's finances, including its main revenue streams, expenditures, and other financial applications. It contains actual, current, and projected financial data. When they talk about revenues, revenues are enhanced with trend charts. Outstanding. The revenue discussion is detailed and informative. Then when they talk about the capital program, an effective capital plan provides information on capital investment and restore strategies. Capital is thoroughly presented with quantified operating impact. They talk about debt. The presentation of the city's debt strategy includes obligations, debt limits, and its impact on current operations. Debt information includes per capita ratings and ratios. They talk about the departmental program descriptions. The city of Dubuque's mission and services are described in a way that makes it clear what the city's core responsibilities are and how they connect to legislative goals. Departments are fully described with all elements. They talk about departmental program goals and objectives. Departments include multi-year KPIs linked to department and council goals and objectives with status. Nice job. When they talk about performance measures, excellent performance data ensures that all the measurements are achievable. Departments include multi-year KPIs linked to department and council goals and objectives with status. Once again, nice job. They talk about statistics. Outstanding information on the city and the surrounding community. Then they talk about the charts and graphs. The city has excellent charts, graphs, and photographs. Charts and graphs are effectively presented. Outstanding. The document utilizes visual presentation to convey information in a very effective manner. Understandability and usability. The document provides the required criteria in an effective and aesthetic manner. The document is well-organized and easy to follow. The text is clear and concise, and the graphics are effective. Outstanding. The document is very approachable. And that's the end of the comments. So my congratulations to Jennifer Larson and her team.
Let's congratulate Jennifer and her team. So Jennifer, you really, you guys are the best in the business by far. I just think it, and here's, I'm going to tell you a really quick story, just real quick story. Last year, when the state legislature started talking about property tax reform, one of the things that came up was this idea of transparency, that cities and counties in the state need to be more transparent with where the money goes and all these things. And I will fully admit, because I've never served on any other city councils before, I will fully admit, my first reaction to that was, what do you mean? We're not transparent? Like, how is that even a possibility? Have you been to any of our budget presentations? And then I realized over having more conversations with legislators in other cities, not everybody does it this way. Not everybody lays it all out there for everybody to see. Every dollar and every cent counted and everything shown for what that funding does on a regular basis every single year for the community. And I think it's just, it is such a testament to, I think, how good you are at that and how good the department is, and how good, really, all the departments in the city of Dubuque are when it comes to putting that all out there for the budget presentations. And it also helps me remember how worth it it is to sit there for four hours a night for eight nights in the month of March and now into April, and how useful that is in the role that we have. And I'm actually really thankful for it. I'm really thankful for it as a resident of this community and especially thankful for it as somebody who is tasked with making some of the very important decisions to what we're going to, what we're going to do around here. So thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done, and, you know, we've had, we're probably going to see this award again next year, I would hope, because, you know, we've got a real streak going now, so keep on, keep on rolling. But I really do, I really do appreciate the work you do, and I know I'm speaking for all of us when I say that. Any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is 2025 State Legislative Priorities.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Director of Strategic Partnerships Terry Goodman and Technical Grant Analyst Assistant Justin Tilgen worked with department managers and the city of Dubuque strategic partners to develop a set of recommended 2025 state legislative priorities and is recommending adoption of those priorities. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council adoption of the 2025 state legislative priorities.
Thank you, Mike. We are having our legislative dinner this week to talk to our legislators, those who are returning to the legislature and those who are new to the legislature. I think it's one of the most important things that we do every single year in this, in the city council, is be able to talk to our partners in the legislature. They have a hundred-day, seems like a wicked fast session. I mean, it just goes and goes, and it's a lot that happens in that time. And the more that we have an opportunity to talk with them and collaborate with them around the things that they'll be deciding on, I think the better it is for everybody, not just here in Dubuque, but also in the state. So I appreciate that we have legislative priorities that we put forth every single year. I will remind everyone that us putting legislative priorities forward doesn't mean we want to do all these things on the city council. It actually doesn't mean that really at all. These are priorities that we are asking our legislature to consider and think about and work toward with us as partners. I think sometimes we might look at these and say, we're going to go and just, these are the things that we're just going to go and do. We have both state priorities and federal priorities, and I think it's important that we put those forth to show what we value and the things that we need to get done based on how we prioritize things here in the city of Dubuque. Any further discussion on this one? All right. Motion here is to receive and file, approve the legislative priorities for the state of Iowa this year. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is Updated Equity and Human Rights Commission Ordinance.
Ms. Jones?
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second.
Got to move by Jones, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief of Equity and Human Rights Gisella Aitken Shadle is recommending adoption of an amended Equity and Human Rights Ordinance. On November 12, 2024, the Commission of Equity and Human Rights unanimously voted to present an updated version of the Equity and Human Rights Ordinance to the city council for their approval. In months prior to this meeting, the commission had met and worked together with support of the city attorney Krena Brumwell to move this matter forward and have an updated ordinance that reflects and supports the work that this commission is tasked with. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Yeah, Ms. Rousell.
I wondered if we could just get a, just thumbnail summary of what changes happened or why there was a need for a change?
I can address that. The commission, as you know, has had a number of new appointments over the course of the last, I'm going to say approximate 12 to 14 months or so. And as new members came on to the commission and were given orientation and onboarding and things like that, they reviewed the ordinance and as a body felt that there needed to be some clarification to more better reflect their actual, I'm going to say, marching orders, if you will, or their tasks, or what you as a body are asking of them. And so these changes are intended to clarify that and prioritize and make it clearer for those serving on the Equity and Human Rights Commission what they should be focusing on.
Thank you.
Ms. Rousell? Any other discussion? So I don't want the lack of discussion to reflect to the commission, we don't respect the work that they have done on this, and your office, Krena, and the city attorney's office, as well as the Department of Equity and Human Rights. This was, this was a big task. This was a major lift. You know, we've heard about it from the commission a little bit. They have definitely been working hard to try and make some changes here. And I, and I really do hope that this helps to do exactly what you just described, provide some clarity and provide some more direction for everybody involved in this. And I think it, I think it could be, could be helpful to do that. Yeah? Gisella, would you like to? Yeah?
Gisella Aitken Shadle, Equity and Human Rights Office. As Krena alluded, that's exactly what's happened. Since I took over the position and due to the COVID prior to that and the department being in transition with Kelly's reassignment to another department, the commission needed more direction, and they are very literal in a sense, and they want to do justice to their position. So with all those changes, that's where they are at. They want to go ahead and make sure that they're following it to the T and that they are actually performing. I think this would also help alleviate any misunderstanding, possible misunderstandings in the past by portraying more accuracy moving forward for new commissioners that are appointed to this, to this commission.
Thank you, Gisella. Okay. All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
And with final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
And I will just note, I apologize, I didn't notice as I took the roll on that, that it was slightly misordered than the roll call for all of our previous items, so I do apologize for that. This next one is in the correct order. Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Award 2024 SRF Green Alley Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant City Engineer Robert Schissel is recommending city council award the public improvement construction contract for the 2024 SRF Green Alley Project to McDermott Excavating in amount of $1,202,512, which is 10.4% below the engineer's estimate of probable cost through the adoption of the enclosed resolution. To date, the city has reconstructed 81 alleys using interlocking concrete pavers to create green alleys. Green alleys help allow for water infiltration, thus reducing runoff from rain events. The alleys also help with reducing total suspended solids, nitrogen, and phosphorus from entering the storm sewer system in Dubuque. The 2024 Green Alley Project will include the reconstruction of three alleys in the downtown area. These alleys include the reconstruction of the alleys, and this is two of them, between Iowa Street and Central Avenue from 15th to 17th Streets. The third alley will be reconstructed between Central Avenue and White Street from 17th to 18th Street. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
When we talked about Central and White as priority, this is very close to Central and White, obviously, but I think it's important to acknowledge, you know, we have business owners who are already there, who have invested in that space. And if we don't prioritize alleys based on need, not, I mean, we all know, we've got a lot of alleys in our city that need work. But as we prioritize Central and White, it makes sense to me that we prioritize the alleyways near it. So I appreciate that this is the direction we're going, and I know there's a lot of folks appreciative of it in that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is Award Broadway Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
Receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council award the public improvement construction contract for the Broadway Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project to Chig Fry Excavating in the amount of $266,668.30 through the adoption of the attached resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Neighbors are looking forward to this. Glad we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Quick question, Mr. Van Milligan. A lot of times you talk about that in relation to the estimated cost. Was there an estimated cost? And was it more or less than that estimate?
We're going to let the city engineer Gus Ahoyas answer that one.
It was nice to give Gus a reason when he sticks around, so, thanks, Gus.
Thank you. Gus Ahoyas, city engineer. So the cost was 16.33% under our estimate, and we, it was very competitive bidding. We had six, seven bids. So that's good news when you have seven bids, and they were fairly close to each other, so.
Super. Thank you very much for that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Eagle Point Water Plant Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Upgrade Award Construction Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Water Department Director Chris Lester is recommending city council award the construction contract for the Eagle Point Water Plant Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, or SCADA, upgrade to Westfall and Company in the amount of $1,345,500. Lump sum bid is 27% lower than the engineer's estimate. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Hearing none. Thanks for being here, Chris. Adrian, we have a motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
Council member reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
So as you so noted before, you and I were representing Dubuque for the National League of Cities last week, and one of the outcomes of the AI Advocacy Committee was the generation of this document that was cosponsored by Google, of which everybody has a copy. And it is a generic but good, solid report on artificial intelligence and highlights ways via the toolkit that municipalities, no matter what size, can start to work on strategies, guidelines, and hopefully their own toolkits. So this was a year's endeavor, and it was completed. And I was just really happy to see that a lot of the technology advances and cybersecurity and AI were top of mind throughout the entire week. And so it was just really wonderful to see that because it's never too late and AI is here, so hopefully we can demystify it. And I will look forward to hearing from Chris Coleman and the IT department exactly what our next steps will look like and what our policies will look like as well. But these are just published, so please, if you have any questions, let me know. But we also had another ITC meeting where we talked about the legislative priorities for the National League of Cities for technology applications on Capitol Hill, and that will be presented to the new Congress, actually, in January.
Thank you, Ms. Farber.
Yeah.
And of course, thank you for your service, the commission as well.
My pleasure to represent Dubuque, and it was just really, it was a great exercise, and I learned a lot, and hopefully we'll continue to add some benefit.
That's great. Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Pretty quiet couple of weeks for me personally. We had a DMASWA meeting last week, and we've got one this Wednesday, which includes a public hearing on the customer convenience center that we're planning to build at the, at the landfill. This will change the experience fairly dramatically for the, for the individual with the, with a trunk full of waste that they need to get rid of, with the recycling opportunities, under a roof, out of the weather, away from the heavy equipment that could, you know, fall over and kill you. With a two-scale system to get in and out quickly without a line, or at least without as bad of a line. It also makes things easier for the commercial haulers that will go to a different scale and not be in line except behind each other, and improve the efficiency of their operation fairly dramatically. So that public hearing occurs second or third thing on the agenda Wednesday at noon at the Municipal Services Center of the Dubuque Betch Polite Area Solid Waste Agency, under the guiding Iowa Chairperson David Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. Well, I had the opportunity to attend the 150th anniversary celebration of the Sisters of the Presentation and tour their facility on Carter Road and see all the great history that they have there. But what is most impressive is the continuing work that all the sisters do in our community. So it was just a really great opportunity. And of course, been planting trees throughout the community, coming to a close soon, but there's never too late.
Well, there is too late, but you're going to run it right up to the last minute, we know. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Rousell. Any others? Well, then I'll just close with the trip that we've alluded to already to the National League of Cities Conference. It was the 100th year anniversary, lots of celebration in that, which was really cool to see, but also an interesting time to be meeting as a group of cities. So, and since we all met, there has been a national election, and that national election was decided rather decisively, but also rather split. We are a pretty 50/50 country when it really comes down to it. And I got to tell you, when you get together with lots of different city leaders throughout the country, you can feel that. That's kind of the same, we're all feeling the same thing. And what I would say right now about the tenor of the groups that we were talking with the most, and there were some really interesting presentations and all kinds of great things that we always learn a lot about, which we'll continue to talk more about in the years ahead, but, you know, there's just a great deal of uncertainty in the local government level right now. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's misplaced. I think there's just a great deal of uncertainty of, okay, we've been going a pretty solid direction for four years under this particular federal government, sometimes under state governments, and now we're going to, we're going to make a, we're going to make a pretty decisive shift in a different direction. And that's just a statement of fact. I just want to point that out, not a political one, but a statement of fact. And I think city governments are feeling that. And some of us in states are feeling that as well, too, that there's a pretty decisive shift, and now we're going to be moving in a, in a new direction and needing to work through that. So I had the opportunity to speak with, as, so as you know, I'm serving as the president of the Iowa League this year, and we had a gathering of the Iowa League, the Minnesota League, and the Wisconsin League, for anybody who was attending the conference. And they gave us an opportunity as presidents to speak, and I used my, my opportunity to bring, to just bring this up and say, I, I'm reading the room, and I sense uncertainty, and I sense some real challenges in front of us. And this is what I want to make sure we all remember, is that come January, when changes start to happen at both federal and state levels of government, at local levels, the water's still going to run, your sewer's still going to function, your police are still going to serve you, your fire department is still going to serve you. All the services that you've come to expect are there for you, and we are there for you, and we have your back as your local representatives. And we have each other's back as local representatives as well. Because in times of uncertainty, we have to remember the things that are fairly certain, and remember the fact that we're all in these jobs when those days come, and we are, we stand ready to work together with our state government and our federal government. We will continue to take trips to Des Moines, we'll continue to take trips to Washington, DC, we'll continue to pick up the phone, they will continue to come here and, and meet with us, and I look forward to those days and look forward to continuing in our, in our service together. So I am hopeful that that message is something that's, that's helpful as we move forward because I think in times of uncertainty, that's just, there's a general unease that we feel, and I think there's some anxiety. And I just want the people of Dubuque to know that we're, we're here and ready to serve, and we're going to continue to push forward to do that.
Mr. Mayor, so that was the, the general tenor of the whole week, actually, was the importance of local and the importance of our guidance and our leadership, I think, was just really extraordinary and very well-received and very well-understood.